Good evening, everybody. This is the Halifax Board of Selectmen's Meeting for January 23, 2018. We are currently being filmed by Area 58. Community Access Television, available to you on Community Access Television and YouTube. As is our custom, we will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add or any complaints?
I will move the agenda as printed.
Here it is. Sorry.
Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen's Minutes. Regular sessions for October 24, 2017, and regular session for November 28, 2017. Has everyone had a chance to look them over?
Yeah, I will move those as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the warrants, Mr. Garrett?
I would move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 65 for $352,831.16. Vindal warrant number 66 for $1,468,256.98. Withholding warrant number 67, $130,458.22. Amulet's commitment 1A for $46,060. And Amulet's commitment 1B for $35,054.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And then we have to do the first one.
Yeah, go back.
Oh, sorry. Vindal warrant number 64, that's good away. You separated it out.
That's because you affirm approval of that one. And the other one you approved.
He just tried to make me look bad.
No, it's time to make you look bad.
Vindal warrant number 64 for $41,638.76.
Second.
And I would move to approve the Selectmen's Bills.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Insurance. MIA Property Casualty Company Incorporated, $2,906. Law account, Douche, Williams &amp; Brooks, Doranis &amp; Holland. Total amount of $5,755.80. Audit, Lynch, Malloy, and Marini, LLP. Clients, $4,500. Selectmen's expense account, WB Mason Incorporated. Invoice, 1/17/18, $47.49. And that completes the presentation.
I will second those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Where it's already 7:35, we should probably move on to our scheduled appointment with Mr. Scott McTurner, our new Director of Building Maintenance. I believe Mr. Campbell's going to introduce him.
Yes, on board. I'd like to introduce Scott McTurner. He is our new building maintenance director. And he comes with a lot of background. And he should do a great job for us. And you met Charlie?
Yes, yes, yes. Never met him again.
We know each other.
Kim Roy?
Aye.
Hi.
How are you?
And the old guy over there, Charlie?
Oh. Well, yeah, it's so personal.
And the child, you know, old.
Huh?
Old. Some of us old.
He meant to say bold.
I'm the youngest.
Yeah, yeah, you are, aren't you?
So anyways, we have great things for Scott. He's going to do a great job for us. And as I say, he comes with a lot of talent. So we kind of find Jerry very hard to replace.
Oh, yeah.
But he was easy to replace, is that what you're saying? I'm sorry.
But we have somebody with as much talent as Jerry had. He just has to learn the rules of the game here.
Oh, he wasn't told what the rules were?
I'm learning the rules.
One day by day around here.
Has he learned the labyrinth of the basement of the town hall? That's the real question.
Yeah, that's an interesting adventure. Do you mind if I ask? I know you've been on board just a little short time.
Sure.
Your first impressions?
There's an awful lot to do. A lot more evolved than was on the job description.
Yeah, it's really too difficult a job to explain because it would take pages. And there's a lot of nuance of things. And that's really what I was concerned about.
Can they put it in the fine print on the bottom?
It's a tough job. It's a hard job. It's demanding. It has a lot of facets to it.
A lot of balls to juggle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that comes with some comfort after having done it for a while. And it kind of gets to the routine. It's that newness thing. It's like any new endeavor. But I have every confidence in you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I know everybody has said, you know, this Jerry is irreplaceable, honestly, to me. I can't believe that. I know, I'm very excited that you're here. But we have often said how people don't realize what the job is and how beautiful our buildings are, even though it looks flawless, but it's not. Like, it's a lot of work. And we are so lucky to have that department. And I really wish you luck. And I know that you'll do great. I hear wonderful things about you. And you'll get to know all of us. And, you know, we all are sort of like a family. Like, we all, it's a family environment, you know? Whatever you need, you just let us know. And we're here to support you in any way that you need.
It's most of them here. I'd like to take an opportunity to welcome you here and look forward to working with you in progress, as I have with Jerry. And I want to compliment Jerry at this time. It's been fun. You know, we've shed tears together. And people, you know, a lot more like to. But I say this with honesty. I appreciate all the things that you've done for the town. And you've always given 110%.
Yeah.
So I expect 120 out of you.
Yeah, I mean, really, there wasn't a time that we didn't not think that Jerry would respond. I mean, I've been with you at 3:00 in the morning. We can talk about that publicly. No, but whatever we've needed, you know, and I know that you'll do the same. And hopefully, we won't have to do that that often. But you have a really great team. And again, like I said earlier, we're a resource for you, whatever you need.
Great. Thank you.
Because I think the towns made it very clear to the Building Committee, to the staff, to Boris Selectman and myself, that they want our properties maintained. While we, you know, at times show an interest in trying to expand our facilities and such, their priority is not letting things fall apart. And it's very difficult for us to go to town meeting to say we let things fall apart. Now, there are many times when we need to do major renovations, but that's just simply based on the age of the buildings. And those things are going to happen, whether it's replacing a roof or anything like that. Those things will happen. But the goal is there is that we just allow things to just drop and not do something about it.
Can you fix that because it's really loud? Let me get a laugh.
But the one thing that I liked about Jerry is that he was proactive and he was always able to bring things ahead, even if he knew he couldn't do a particular thing. He made people aware that there was a problem and needed to deal with it. So it's something that, you know, hides. The expectation is not always that you're going to be able to solve the problem, but at least you're aware that there is a problem. That's where the Scotts are. Mr. Campbell, would you like to add?
My lasting impression of Jerry is that of the Energizer Bunny. He never stood still. He was always, if you wanted to talk to him, you had to keep up with him.
Yeah, you had to.
Because he was on to his next project.
Yeah, yeah.
Did he get home with it?
Yeah, well, aren't we all? Or some of us are.
He makes me be able to keep up with him now.
Well, I understand he's only 35, so why is he leaving? I don't know.
Do you live close by?
I do. I live on 106 in Clinton.
Oh, perfect.
Clinton, where's that?
Awesome.
We don't get out much.
That's frankly one of the pluses because it's that type of job that requires you to have close proximity. You can't be 45 or 50 minutes away. That would have not worked out well for us.
I was worried qualifications. Out of the license he's had, the qualification of him being close by on the 24th, setting the pause.
Yeah.
When somebody forgets to lock the town hall or somebody follow around, goes off to the school.
It's not an hour drive, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little bit sharp here at the time.
And as we said, I mean, there's a lot of buildings and, you know, we've kept them in great shape. And, you know, we try to work with capital planning. And I'm sure that Jerry has everything so organized of what is due next and all those kinds of things.
Certainly does.
Yeah.
And the good news is Jerry isn't going too far away, so we can still use him as a resource.
I'm going to speak that way.
Yeah. Perhaps with your free time, you'd like to be appointed to another.
Did he Facebook you, Jerry?
How about the building?
I did that.
I think they're full, yeah.
No, not on that form. They'll be approved tonight, though.
Well, I don't know that I've gotten the form yet.
It's your watch.
Oh, oh, really?
Sorry to tell you, but I don't go down there every minute.
I was kidding. That's awesome.
One thing at a time.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, it was very nice meeting you. We'll see you around.
Sure.
Or we'll find you. Bye, John.
Bye.
Take care, John.
I'll see you soon. Where are you guys going?
They're going out. They'll be back.
What's the excitement that you'll be is going to be exciting.
Anytime we're together is exciting, Jerry.
Okay.
Anytime.
It's all the excitement we can stand. It's not quite 7:45, but I don't know if it's close enough. It's not an official.
Yeah.
Yeah, so why don't we move on?
Mr. Hinckley?
Mr. Hinckley? Why don't you come on down?
And we want treats as bad as we treat the other guy.
Well, that's all right.
Please have a seat. Mr. Hinckley is here for an appointment to the Taunton River Stewardship Council?
Wow, you have an impressive resume.
Oh, thank you.
Really? It's awesome.
Do we need, does anyone have any questions with Mr. Hinckley? Or do we need to?
What is your assessment of what's going on with the town stewardship at this point in time?
Well, it's kind of hard to find a lot of press information. Hopefully, that's representative from Halifax to be able to hear from you and the board and the town what's going on. I know that they're under-resourced. It's a lot that happens in this watershed. I know Bill Palatano real well, and he has a lot of calls up from the air at all times over at Surfep. He's a great guy, but hopefully he's someone that we can work with and have a good relationship.
Excellent. Thank you.
Awesome. I see that you do work for the Commonwealth.
I do.
That's awesome. And you're the Director of Grants?
I am.
Okay.
You've had me, hello. I would like to make a motion. No, it's awesome.
We shall entertain your motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint William. Do we have an expiration?
Yes, I did. It's two years from today. So I think it's like for January 23, 2020.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm making a.
I think it goes from the date that you're, the 10th of January.
Right, right. Do you have, before I do that, do you have any questions about?
So as from the town's perspective, what's the expectation in terms of reporting back to this board, to other boards here in town regarding activities of the commission? Is it something that's done on a monthly basis, quarterly?
I would say once a year we have some.
Yeah, yeah. Or if something unusual event takes place.
I will say that, I mean, the board's following of interest, the, I mean, this was an article from the Globe from end of the year last year. It was about the West Bridgewater Dam. They're on 106. It's now, I guess now in the process of being taken down.
Taken down.
Which means another obstacle towards getting.
The hammer down.
Back up to Mont Ponce. It is going. There's a number of barriers still, but our hope is that the Stewardship Committee Council can be working towards that.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. So.
So we have a motion?
I have a motion that we appoint William W. Hinckley to the Taunton River.
Stewardship Council.
I just want to mention I have that. With a term expiring on January 23, 2020.
I would second that, but I just wanted to open the end that I don't want to be a term runner.
You may have some objection to that.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Congratulations and thank you.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for the volunteer, your time.
My first foray into volunteering with the town government.
That's a wonderful thing.
Did you?
Well, we'll find more things for you.
Yeah, when you work for the state, you volunteer anyway.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Did you study environmental engineering at Mass Maritime?
No, I worked at Mass Maritime. My undergrad is from St. Lawrence University.
Okay.
Environmental studies.
Yeah. I know, we've been busy. Thank you so much for coming in.
I appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
It's gel pens.
Oh, I know, it looks nice though, yes. Okay.
Don't touch the pen because it'll bleed. Don't touch the pen.
Oh. So are we being with? Okay.
So our next appointment is at 8 o'clock. Do we want to do some mail first?
You're asking me or asking?
I'm asking you.
Sure, I'm always.
I'm telling them, I'm asking you.
I'm available for mail, yes. Four Daughters and the Proposed Hosted Community Agreement. This is the developer of the proposed marijuana facility off of River Street. They had sent this in a couple of weeks ago. I did send it over to Town Council for review. I've also found some other examples of medical marijuana host community agreements. The reason that I'm only finding the medical ones is obviously because the state regs aren't fully in place yet and there are no examples yet for the recreational. But those can be, I think, helpful as a guide because I think the issues are very similar. It's simply the user base can be larger. Obviously, I think that's the biggest difference. But in any case, what you're talking about is a growing facility in terms of how it's grown and what the regulations are going to be for a growing facility. They're not going to really be any different, I expect, from a medical one versus recreational growing facility. But I need.
But it's growing and processing, right?
And processing, yeah. But I need some guidance from the board as to what you folks would like to do if you're, if there's no interest in moving forward with this project. I'd like to be able to tell these folks if you want to wait for whatever reasons that you have for whatever period, that'd be fine also. But I just would like to tell the developer that. The other possibility is if you want to schedule a public forum at some point in the future so that the public has a chance to comment on the facility and the proposed host community agreement, at the same time, I can go back to council and say, let's go through this if we want revisions to it based on what we've seen before. If the board wants revisions and such, let's, you know, make some changes and send that back. I'll note that whatever public forum in the host community agreement, this is not the site plan approval. Nor is it the special permit approval through the ZBA and through the planning board. So for instance, if someone says, well, I want the board select going to put something in here about lighting, that's not something that's covered under the host community agreement. That's going to be under site plan review and special permit. Same thing with noise or anything like that.
We're just looking at the broad picture here. Are we interested or are we not interested?
Now, we did have the public forum, though. We did invite.
The initial one, but we didn't have, we didn't have a host community agreement, for instance.
We didn't have a host community agreement as to what might be the response or. My question is, is what did our councilor say about the agreement? Did he have any?
No, I have, you know, Larry and I communicated in the sense of I've given this to him and given the other ones, but I haven't said, please send the comments into the Boris Selectman.
My question for you, Charlie, is I know that they had not yet even perked the land. So is it something that they want to make sure that they have a host agreement before they go forward or have they?
Maybe. I don't know that they have.
We don't know.
I, that's what I gleaned from our last conversation. They wanted to know if there was support before they went ahead.
And put some money into engineering.
Talk about putting $10 million total in the whole project and stuff. I would think to have it perked and go through, why would they go spend money if they're sure they're going to be able to build on the property?
Yeah.
Well, they'll do that, but I think they're just looking to see if there's support for it first before they even bother to go that far.
If the projections that they made at the last meeting, public meeting we had, are anywhere close to what it is, it'd be worthwhile for the town to look very closely at.
I agree with you, regardless of what my feelings are personally about the law. And I think we all expressed the fact that I don't believe any of us voted for it. But having said that, we do have an obligation to look at it from the point of view of the entire town and what the possible benefits are of the town financially, keeping in mind that we do not have a large commercial base of any type. So as dicey as it may seem, we have to, in fact, look at it. It's a significant amount of revenue that we can't otherwise duplicate.
Right. Because as a community, not only don't we have a large commercial base, we're not attracted to companies to come to Halifax. We have an opportunity. I think you said that it's worth six WalMarts, is that what you estimated at one point? So, I mean, I'm happy to move forward, but let's talk about the idea of a public forum because we had that public forum. And we could do it again. I think we would have the same people come with the same questions. It's up to you.
I think you're right to some extent, though. Reading after the forum, this was weeks after, there were people who, as usual, I mean, the word never gets out to everybody.
Okay.
And I think there were people, for instance, that I saw commenting that indicated they hadn't even known that this was a thing.
Okay.
And as much as we're all on agreement that the host community agreement can't deal with the concerns of the Butters, I think it's another opportunity for the Butters, for the property, to be able to ask questions about it so that the developers have a better idea of what the town's going to be looking for in terms of noise, in terms of odor, in terms of lighting.
But doesn't that fall into the special permit?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And ultimately, that's where it's going to be.
And those will, there will be meetings for those.
Yes.
So there'll be another opportunity for them to voice their opinions.
Wouldn't that actually be the best place to air those?
I agree, but I guess my question then for the board is if you just, if it, is the conversation simply going to be with council and the developer without public comment for the host agreement?
I, the host agreement gets so technical, I don't know that that's, not debatable, but I don't have a problem with having another.
I can go either way. You know, it makes no difference to me at this point in time because I haven't even read the host agreement on what are some of the points that were maybe brought up and how, in fact, public opinion might affect that.
Yeah, I think having a draft host agreement would be beneficial to have any kind of forum.
Yeah. It's a very small.
It is.
Right.
Because as you're all pointing out, it covers only a small part of.
Right.
The issues that might involve the actual development of the property.
Yeah, and compensations and.
It does include the compensation, the 3%.
And beyond that, we're not getting into any details.
Right. You know, I know at one point, for instance, there was a question about hiring. And there's a line here, $4 shall give hiring preferences to residents of the town who otherwise meet the qualifications for employment at the premises, as an example. I mean, we're not going to monitor it in a sense of, we don't get to see people's applications and such for a job, but there's at least a commitment there in.
I think that's to their benefit, too, if they can hire local people.
In the case of the snowstorms and.
Yeah, well, we're just talking about being able to respond to situations.
Commutes, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so.
So what to do?
Well, what to do? I mean, I understand that, so if there were a lot of people that weren't able to come to the forum, then I'm in support of having another one. I know that I would want the same people there from Four Daughters, like all those presenters who need to be there. And I know some of them are from out of state. So I feel badly asking them to do that, but if we do have a number of residents that feel badly they didn't make the first one, then.
Well, another way of handling it, I don't think there were a lot, personally.
Okay.
If there were people who were interested, I did not, let me put it this way. I understand Facebook seems to be the only way that people want to contact the town.
Yes, yes.
And it's not the best way of doing so. But even there, as much as people were commenting, there were only, if it was even five, two or whatever, a number of people who said, well, I didn't even know about this. We had done plenty of publicity via Facebook and the regular news media about the original forum. One of the things we could do is I can put this up online and say, and point at it and say, people, if you have comments about this.
Okay.
Please get them into Boris Selectman, you know, even post on Facebook and I'll get, you know, deliver the comments.
And we had, the original forum was retaped. And we could also make an arrangement to have that aired at certain times.
Well, it's also on YouTube.
Yeah, no, I understand, but we could put that online on our site to say if you'd like to revisit this.
I don't think anything new would be.
My only point is that in the agreement we make, I want to make sure that we have adequate public forums so that the money comes down later on and says we can get an opportunity.
Well, the special permit will require notice to the Butters. The site plan doesn't, but I will make sure if it ever gets to the planning board as a part of a site plan review, that I will make sure that the event's publicized so that.
I think that's a better way to handle it.
Yes.
Because I think what we're going to end up doing is just rehashing what we were going to do.
Okay, a great idea. No, that's a great idea.
So if the board would allow, I will go back to Larry, say, let's work on this, see what we can do in the next couple of weeks, get it back to the developer and perhaps bring this back to the board on the 13th of February.
And let the developer know that we're, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
We're working on this, we're interested.
Right. I think that's reasonable. You good with that, Troy?
Yep.
Okay.[1603.72]
Okay.
Fine. Maybe we got time for a couple more things. Printing town report, meeting warrant, we do have a quote from Harding and Son, basically the same quote as from last year, the price per page for the warrant is up 20 cents per page. That's less than half of 1%. We'll be fine with the budget, so if the board wants to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. We dealt with Mr. Hinkley, obviously we dealt with Scott M. Turner earlier tonight. I'm recommending disbanding two board committees, I mean, ones that the board had established. One's the master plan committee, we had a master plan developed a few years ago. There are any number of recommendations that, some which we might be talking about tonight, but their work for right now is done, I'm recommending disbanding them. I'm also recommending disbanding the open space committee. The plan got done as part of the HOPS playground application. It won't need to be done, it won't have to be revised again until 2022, so I'm recommending.
I'll make a motion that we disband the master plan committee and the open space committee.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous?
Larger outdoor event permits, the Board of Health has had this for a number of years where if someone's having a large gathering, I don't mean a private gathering, but more of a public nature, that they want to make sure, you know, public safety, public health, everything else is factored in there. Now they're wondering if departments, just as we sometimes, when we're doing earth removal as an example, we do sign offs, whether the board selection, they're asking the board selection, do you want to sign off on this? Not that you're doing the permit itself, but at least you're saying, hey, we've been told about this, we've put any comments.
I like the idea because I don't like the idea when people come to ask me about a particular bit that's going on and have no information concerning what it was, sometimes not even what it was sign off on.
Yeah, I totally agree with you.
Fine, I'll say yes. Burge Pond, the state access in Elm Street, I just had an update from Jason Zimmer earlier this month from Fisheries and Wildlife. They've reached an agreement with a contractor to get the work done for the access. So they're hoping to get that started next month and be done before spring.
Perfect.
So, that's moving along. Selectment's policies, I know it's a big bundle, but you've got three weeks. I'll take a look at this and make some recommendations for changes. Some of this hasn't been reviewed since before I was here. Some of it's simply that we've, on our own, through the board obviously, we were doing things differently than it's actually outlined in the policies and it'd probably be good to have the two align with each other. On Burge Pond, again, the Elm Street parcel that's owned by the town and the possible transfer to the state. I don't know what the board wants to do on this one. Whether you have no interest in doing anything with the state, whether you want to hold in fact a public forum on this particular idea of transferring some or all the parcel in some fashion to the state. And then reconsider and figure out what, you know, the town might want to do or if you want to already move forward with one of the options that was presented by Fisheries and Wildlife a few weeks ago.
If Fisheries and Wildlife were in fact interested in purchasing our parcel, would we have to make it available to anybody?
Yes, but we can place restrictions on the parcel in the sense of.
That it would contain easement or blah blah blah?
Yeah, exactly.
Which would defer, deter most people from wanting. The request was that we allow them a pretty much unconditional easement on the property, which effectively is giving it to them. So myself personally, because of the
Histories?
15, 17 years of history with this, I would be inclined, because it's been gerrymandered to the point where it's almost worthless to us, that if they were wanting to purchase it, I would be inclined to sell it to them at a reasonable price.
Well, I think they came in with a reasonable price.
As long as it's held up by the appraisal.
Yes, and that price was acceptable to me because that was the number we were talking about originally.
Originally.
And what they.
I didn't think that the woman said that she needed to worry about.
She does, she needs to worry about an appraisal.
She said there was something else that they could.
Right, what they're thinking then is that are adjacent to their own lands right now, that they could purchase as part of it to bring the total price up.
I wouldn't have a problem with that because it would not be usable land and it'd be better for them to be able to put it out for use than us.
I agree.
All right, I'm for it.
Okay, so I will contact Joan, I'll also contact Larry and start the necessary gears in motion, but we'll still need to go to town meeting in May.
Right, but we can have it ready for.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it is, it's eight o'clock and we have a hearing. For Mr. Derek Dowding, unregistered vehicle permit. Is Mr. Dowding here? What are we doing?
So you have one unregistered vehicle on your property. You'd like, I believe, a short term permit in the sense of the number of months to be able to dispose of it properly.
We want you to define.
Yes, I mean, I'm not talking about, I don't think you're, no one I think is expecting for you to be able to dispose of the vehicle in the next few weeks, but on the other hand, I don't know what, how long you think it's going to take.
There are still parts on the truck that I'm taking off for a personal vehicle of mine. I can't determine, you know, it's going to be, I want to say within the next six months.
So you're looking for the permit for six months?
Can the car be seen from the street?
Yes, the area that it's surrounded, it's impossible to place the vehicle on the property without being able to see it from the street.
Can we use a.
Right on Lincoln and Montpont, it's right on.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Do you have more than one vehicle there?
Just one. I have a vessel, but.
Okay. Is it possible with a cover?
I was going to ask that, could I put a tarp over it?
I was thinking of a car cover, what type of vehicle is it?
It's a 97 F-350.
Okay, so it's that small?
No, it's a big truck.
Are there any neighbors here?
We were just notified, we're saying what's going on.
Oh.
It said, unregistered permits, so I didn't know if they let me mow their junkyard or something.
No, it's always good to check.
With one vehicle, I don't have a problem.
Different permit for that.
And my apologies, could you tell Pam who you are just so she knows as part of the minutes for the record?
Kirkens on 12 Lyon Street.
Any thoughts?
As long as the neighbors are fine.
I only, I just happened to drive by and noticed it, I didn't even realize it was on the agenda. That's why I asked if there was more than one, because I remember seeing something else out there. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I got the bolt on the other side of the truck, so you can't see it from Montpont.
Because I know exactly who you're talking about.
If we put a specific time limit on it, I don't have, I just don't want to see it open ended. And I, I, I mean, we did this recently and we made somebody put up a section of fence. I want to be somewhat consistent, but at least a cover or a tarp or something over the vehicle while it's being dismantled, because it's not going to get any more attractive as it starts to get dismantled.
How about a car cover as opposed to?
Well, I was thinking, the car cover was my first thought.
Trying to find a car cover without a cover.
A 350, yeah.
It's a big truck, it's got a utility body on it, it's a crew cab, so it's 22 feet long, about five and a half feet wide.
Well, I was going to ask him to paint it a different color.
A neutral color.
I have a question, if it's just being dismantled from parts, that he's being sold out, so is this a six month permit that he's going to need for another vehicle that'll be dismantled and another vehicle will be sold? And is there going to be a commercial business on a residential area?
This would be a one shot deal if we were to, at least in my opinion.
This is not for a commercial?
No, it's not, it's personal use for another truck of mine, so. I mean, if the neighbors think I'm running a junkyard, I'm not running a junkyard. Because I do plan on putting up a fence because, to be honest with you, this is not going to be the first and it's not going to be the last. So once I put the fence up, this should never be a problem again, because it's going to be behind a fence.
We do still need a permit.
The only one, you still need a permit, you're only allowed one unregistered car unless you open up a business.
And that's all seven of these one, so if I got to keep getting permits, I'm going to keep getting permits.
Or you can come before the board for.
Well, you are allowed one unregistered vehicle as long as it's.
Can't be seen from the road, which is why it needs a permit.
Right, for this time, but if you were to put up a fence and it would have been covered, then that's another.
This is how I do it.
So the answer to my question is, yes, he's doing this on a commercial basis. Take a little pot to sell a car, to do another.
I'm taking my topless truck, my truck, into rap.
I don't understand, so you're going to have a new personal truck every six months?
Yeah, because I actually bought another truck, then I'm going to get another truck for it, rebuild.
Let me, you could direct it back this way. When do you plan on putting the fence up?
Come springtime.
So within the next, so within the next 90 days, you're saying you're going to have the fence up? Spring is, well, spring is 50 days away. I'm trying to give you an out here before we want to have to go through this thing.
It does start to sound like this is going to, you're going to rebuild the truck and sell it, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm not going to rebuild it, sell it, because I do have other properties that I have trucks in it. And this is the only time I say I've got a property.
Well, you are kind of exposed there, it's not like you've got any cover to keep of. I, I'm struggling a little bit more with it now because if this is going to be ongoing, I mean, you're not going to keep the truck, if you rebuild it and you get another truck, you're going to sell one and then you're going to do it again.
I have five registered vehicles right now, they're not all of my property.
I'm willing to at least go with the six month with a tarp over it, some type of cover over it to, then we can revisit this issue another time because we're discussing something that hasn't happened yet. And deal with the issue that's in front of us now, and I understand what you're saying, Bert, you're going to change this guy. What do you feel about that?
What do you think, Ken?
I don't know, I mean, I, you know, my first initial thought was, as long as the neighbors are fine with it, but I know you don't, I know this is going to get you back up, but you should, it does sound commercial to me as well. And so, that's kind of a deal breaker for me. So, I don't know how we get around it.
It's not a white picket community fence neighborhood, so I don't know why people complain.
Oh, that's a terrible thing to say, it's a very nice neighborhood, that's an awful thing to say.
I've had nothing but problems with this town since I moved into this town.
Terrible thing to say.
Can I ask what it is zone, is it zone residential, commercial, residential, or?
I think business ends on the other side of Lincoln Street, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's where it is.
The Kitty's Restaurant, used to be a grocery store for him back in the day?
Yeah, that doesn't mean it was necessarily business.
I don't want to age myself.
No, I remember it, so you're not that aging anyway.
That shut down, what, in the 70s?
Yeah, at least, '74.
Was it '74?
Yeah, early 70s. I'm pretty sure the business line ends on the other side of the street on the corner, where Mia's.
It ends there?
Yeah, it comes down from Mile 6.
And it's residential, the other three corners are all commercial.
Yeah.
So he is, across the street are, but the northwest corner where the property is, is residential.
Well, if you have other properties, then perhaps you could house that truck at another property until you can get a fence in.
I have no means of transporting the truck, I had the truck delivered to the house.
So if you had the truck delivered to the house, then you have the means to move it somewhere else?
I do not contact that person, I have nothing to do with that person anymore.
I think I was good until we got to the comment about this was going to keep going on and that kind of concerns me, because at some point, we're flipping vehicles, and that's.
That's, I'm not flipping vehicles, I'm fixing my own personal vehicles.
I understand, but on the other hand, we do allow for one unregistered vehicle on our bylaws. Undercover, or actually, does it say undercover or is it behind the property? Can't be seen.
Behind the door or behind a fence.
We just granted one recently and we required fencing. So I'm now a little more reluctant to not hold it to the same standard. I'd at least want to see some fencing on that side. Stockade, a few sections of stockade or something, just to cover it up. It's a little tricky now with the ground being frozen, but. I think I'd only be inclined to grant the permit with some, with some cover, some fencing.
Okay. Right, how many days do you want to get before the fencing is in?
It would have to be reasonable this time of year, there was frost in the ground. If you'd be inclined to do it, 60 days.
I would go a little further and say 90 days with that year, with the weather's going to be like. Anything else, then you know in the middle of the spring, the ground is thawed, hopefully.
Okay.
All right, I can live with that.
Do you want to make that a motion?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
How many vehicles do you ask to sign?
Small one.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, moving on.
I think you go to 7:15 on the, 8:15 on the similar subject.
I'll be showing first. I'm afraid to come up now.
Nah, nah, come on up.
Don't hurt me.
Kim won't hurt you.
As long as you're nice.
I knew I should have brought some peanut butter cookies to trial.
You've got to make sure you bring the milk along with that.
And some French vanilla ice cream. Ah, come on, Troy.
You can't eat neither of those.
What are we doing? We have another unregistered vehicle?
Same thing, but I'm not, I'm just, I got a rotten frame on a vehicle.
Yeah, sir, can you give?
Do you have your being switched, did you get anything bad?
It was proof of mailing at least.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And for the record, what is the address?
13 11th Ave, and I'm kind of like on a corner, but.
Right, the hillside.
I've already cleaned it up, I've already cleaned it up, so.
A lot.
I pass by it every day.
And this is going to be.
I live on 12th Ave. So you go down, you've got to go down hillside in order to see anything in my yard.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And again, this is one vehicle?
No, this is two.
Well, this is two, two ranges, one's got a bad frame and the other one doesn't. The one looks like it's ready to drive down the street, but.
There's nothing else on there?
But the other one, I already got rid of the cab, the green cab is gone. All my other stuff's all shoved up into the back cab, you don't, looks like I never started anything. So, if you've been over there recently. That's a Friday. Come back for cookies.
How long have these vehicles been on your property?
How long have they been there?
Well, one was recently on the road, we took it off because I can't drive anymore, because I can't see anymore. So what's the sense of having a car on the road if you can't see and drive?
You can get rid of that.
Unless if you want to go for a ride with me, and carry a flashlight around with me everywhere I go, because I can't see in the dark.
Well, the reason why I'm saying for two vehicles is because I'm taking two Rangers.
No, I understand, and you're making one of them.
I'm making one out of the two.
Right.
And basically, right now, I'm down to like one and a half. I got rid of the cab, the green cab that was up on the lawn, that's gone. And everything else is pushed up out of the way, cleaned up, so that my neighbors will be happy. As long as I can work on the kids' bicycles in my neighborhood, the kids are happy too.
What kind of timeframe are you looking for or thinking you're going to need?
Well, like he says, I'm 57 years old, I'm not going out there wrenching in this gold weapon.
So I don't blame you for that.
Can I at least have till some, I mean, it'll probably be early, I'll not spring into the summer.
At least the antisummer.
Well, no, I'll have it done way before the end of summer, I want it done.
Is any of your neighbors here in the night, other than me? A lot of hands.
Yeah, here we are, yeah, they're across the street from me.
Well, we'll give everybody an opportunity to comment on it, who'd like to speak first? Any who want to comment? Any who want to comment? Let's start with that.
Jim Gray, I live on Hillside Ave.
Any concerns?
I've had a lot of complaints, I don't know what the issue is, other than maybe you did have the chassis upside down in the back yard, it kind of, it didn't look bad.
Well, we're not having this hearing because somebody complained.
No, no, just to issue a permit.
Asking for a permit to legalize it for a short period of time to correct some situations. Am I correct? No, well, just to appease the town.
Right.
Because I know none of my neighbors are going to complain, none of my intimate neighbors.
Yeah, we'll just shut that tool shed off right away.
No, I got to take care of the kids' bicycles.
We have somebody else here, sir, did you want to comment or?
I mean, like he says, I'll clean up.
So you're okay with it, basically?
So I just want to verify, so after you finish building this new, you're not going to have any unregistered vehicles on your property, so as of June 1st or May 1st?
I want longer than May 1st because I know him.
Well, see, if we give him a schedule, then he'll be much quicker.
January 3rd anyway?
June 1st.
We have a spring?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to rain every day, so.
So six months would take it, six months would take him into June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe I'll get an inheritance and I could buy a new truck and get rid of all old ones.
No, I got to take.
I like everybody else.
Grease monkey at heart.
Do we want to look for any kind of cover or? Do we wanna look for any kinda cover, or?
Well, they say they can't see it, the neighbors are...
Yeah, it is, pretty much.
Okay, so you, it's not, not an issue?
From, um, yeah, you know, where I have the fence between...
The fence between the two properties.
In between the fence and the house.
It's pretty well, like, L-shaped in the backyard factor, when you change.
I'm trying to picture it, I know the area, but I can't picture it.
I mean, you'd have to come down hillside and kinda...
You'd have to be walking like I do to understand.
Yeah, but then you could, if you were willing to walk.
Well, basically, we're...
You'd wear your green derby band before you see his judge.
Actually, the, the reason we're here is because we're talking about more than one vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, I, I, in a one-shot kind of scenario, I, I don't have a particular problem. As long as the neighbors are okay with it, and it's not necessarily out front in your face.
I sucker the neighbors, I mean, I had the neighbors help me.
Calling up the whole neighborhood, come on, pizza and beer, let's go.
But yeah, it's just a one-shot.
I would recommend, I would recommend six months in that, in that period of time if it's still an issue.
Cause you know, it's like, you get another two months of nasty winter, and then...
Well, you understand our, our, our problem here, we have to, you know, as consistent as possible.
So if that's your motion, I'll second that.
Moved and seconded?
So what is it, the two, the two, what, two vehicles in the driveway, is that what it is?
The two Rangers?
Yeah, I already got rid of half of one. The green cab, that's gone. Started the whole scenario. But the frame is pushed up into the backyard, and eventually the shell off, the gold one's going on it. And then that was...
It's just magazine?
That water frame's gone.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it should come this way, but it was, we're expediting the conversation, that's all. So, so unless anybody else has anything to comment, we're gonna, we have a motion, we have a second, we need a vote, all those in favor?
Aight.
Aight. Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll pray for sun.
No, I want the happy dance for the early spring and good night.
Tomorrow will be it.
Yeah, I know. Thank you for coming, everybody.
So, the July, Robbie can do it on the expected.
Well, we can move on. Oh, no, we can't. Eight-thirty's the next one, so we can do a little more.
We got a few more minutes, yeah. Uh, where are we here? Polly's in Halifax, helping forums, Stacy Verero has...
Oh, she's awesome, she's the, she's the new manager at the Rockland.
Rockland Trust.
I've sent this over to the committee, so I'm hoping to hear back from them. Uh, River Street Bridge, when it touches a river, got inspected by Mass Highway. I've sent the report over to the Highway Surveyor. I did note, there was some, I won't say deficiencies in the sense of it's unsafe, but it's certainly, there are repairs that are needed to be made there, and I...
Is that first on the list, or is...
Well, I think Pine Street needs to be farther up on the list. But it should be on the list, but it shouldn't necessarily be higher than Pine Street. Um, regionalization, great community compact, state awarded a grant of a two thousand three hundred to the town through the fire department to develop a possible intermittent soul agreement for firing EMS service. And Clinton received a fifty thousand dollar grant for the proceedings step, where they're investigating what their options are in fact for firing EMS service. Yes, absolutely. Um, there are grant forms to sign, as with any grant, if the board would authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the town.
Second, all those in favor?
Aight.
Uh, we did get the annual report from Solitude for the twenty seventeen year end treatment report here, um...
And helped me get sleep today.
I'm very glad to hear that we can make that happen for you without drugs. Um, really, there's nothing particularly interesting, or aside from there was that bump in the phosphorus levels during the summer after the treatment, obviously the phosphorus levels went down. They started going back up during the summer before they fell again in the fall, and I think we need, we'll have a conversation with every, the interested parties on February first as part of our Ponce, uh, Pine Working Group. Be interested in trying to figure out what happened, and what we might be able to do to prevent that from happening in future years. Uh, let's see, periodically, the board needs to review its executive session minutes. Um, I put together a table for the board, um, for the ones from sixteen and seventeen. Uh, for the most part, I'm recommending release of the minutes, there's, I think, five of them between negotiations, legal matters that are active right now in security of the town where I would not want the minutes released, but the board can... Pam has the minutes book in the back, if any member of the board wants to review them between now and the thirteenth, and I'll come back to the board on the thirteenth for the board to make a decision about whether to release these or not. Uh, this came in just this afternoon, the Boy Scouts would like, is that on the scene, yeah, the Boy Scouts would like to have their annual community yard sale on Saturday, June sixteenth, there are any conflicts, obviously they've done this before, without any problems.
All those in favor?
Uh, school repair project, we had, earlier this month, we had gotten the bids in for the windows, doors, and siding contract. Um, low bid is Lambrian Construction Company at one million nine hundred and four thousand. Our OPM Vertex has checked their file in Boston, there are any problems, I'm recommending the board award the contract to Lambrian.
Do we all sign it?
Oh, no, there's, there's nothing to sign right now, the, the, the contract itself will be a separate form, but this, this, what we have here are the bids, but we would be awarding the contract.
I would move that we award the contract to Lambrian Construction Company at one million nine hundred and four dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
And I do want, um, the board to understand that the bid that came in, it's been verified as such, it's significantly lower than the original cost estimates. And that obviously will be a savings to the taxpayers, so, I'm appreciating all the work that the architects and the OPM did in making that happen. Um, I'll go into executive session at some point, but just to, so it's on the record that we are getting requests from the unions to start negotiations for the FY nineteen, um, contract. In this case, all of the bargaining units are up for wages only, also, the board's gonna have to con, um, do contracts, like, with the fire and police chiefs for next year, so we'll go into executive session later about that. Uh, open space, um, we did get, obviously, the Hops grant awarded several weeks ago. Um, again, in this case, um, there are grant forms for the board to sign. Um, it's a little, in some cases, Tom is the one who will sign everything. There is a form that they would like the Park Recreation or Conservation Commission to sign, who's ever responsible for Hops. Um, at this point, really, the board is, um, and I'm gonna try and get Youth and Recreation together to sign a copy in case that they truly need that. But there where it says Park Recreation Conservation on the forms, if the entire board could sign that. Chief Executive Officer would be Tom, and the normal grant forms like these, Tom would sign.
Okay, perfect, you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we sign where appropriate.
Second, all those in favor?
Aight.
Uh, Fieldstone Farms and the Horse Shows, um, Fieldstone had sent the dates, that one you don't have to do. Um, see, I think the other side, yeah. Fieldstone Farms had sent in the horse show dates for this calendar year. I had checked in with various departments and interested parties, and put together a table based on the consent agreement that was signed last year, plus what the Board of Health requires, for instance, for well testing. We have a list of dates that they're gonna have to, um, do certain things, like list of vendors, getting the well tested, things like that. There are also two notes on here, one, the gazebo cannot be used, um, it didn't, they didn't obtain the necessary building permits, and it's not up to the building code. And also, the Board of Health is still waiting for a written statement from Mr. Clausen, and his attorney agreeing to the matters discussed at the Board of Health meeting on the wells back on April nineteenth.
It's been over two years, you know, hasn't it?
No, no, the wells was just started last...
Yes. They, they met with, um, Mr. Clausen and Attorney Taylor back in April of seventeen about the wells, and while the...
I thought that issue came on two thousand sixteen.
It may have come up, but I, all I can tell you is that's where it was left, was there was an agreement on this, but it wasn't, they don't have anything in writing for Mr. Clausen and Attorney Taylor. So, what I'm planning on doing is sending this to Fieldstone, saying hi, based on the consent agreement, based on the well testing scheduled for the Board of Health, these are the dates you're gonna need to meet. Just note those other two things I just mentioned, please, you know, I'm guiding your attention to that.
Especially with the gazebo.
Yes.
It's eight thirty.
You want my signature twice on this, right?
Yes, yes, please, but not just, and then on the, sorry, there's four copies of that, I believe, so two of them sign here and sign here, and two of them just sign up there.
Okay.
Okay. So let me pass around stuff to the ZBA members, Plank Board members, and Building Inspector who are here. The board has copies of this also, right now. So, this is a continuation from back in the fall, we had talked about a number of zoning issues with our Building Inspector, or Zoning Enforcement Officers, ZBA, and Planning Board. Um, we also invited the Board of Health in, um, too, because there are issues that sort of don't necessarily fall right within a certain pattern, there's interest by the Board of Health. And while we had a fair amount of discussion back then, we didn't come to necessarily any conclusions. And with the upcoming town meeting in May, and the timeframes necessary to hold hearings and make recommendations, and get things on the ward, I wanted to, um, continue the conversation tonight. Since then, um, there are a few other things that have come up, and I wanted to discuss those also. I don't know where the board wants to start off with.
No, I don't sign the third one, cause parks and...
Yeah, we're gonna, two of them, the board, I want the board to sign all, with all the signatures, and two of them I don't, so that in case I need the Youth and Recreation Commission, for instance, to sign it.
That's why I said just sign two.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
Do you want me to start with the old topics, or the new topics?
Can we start with the old?
Okay, so, um, back in the fall, the first thing we had talked about was the live entertainment events. We had talked about possibly making some zoning changes to allow, um, on a very limited basis, live entertainment events in the agricultural residential district, with a number of stipulations. Land Use Council had provided some recommendations for that, um, we had some discussion, but didn't reach any conclusions. The idea here is that, specifically in the Mudfest legal matter, that both sides have shown an interest in having the town bring something to town meeting, um, that would in fact permit an event like Mudfest, not dealing with whether it's agriculture or not, but just dealing with whether it's a live entertainment event. Um, it would still go through the ZBA for special permit review and such, and application, they'd have to approve it. But it would also allow live entertainment events on other properties in town, but again, very restrictive as to the number of times a year those events could occur, and yet there are other stipulations. And so, as I mentioned, we're getting close enough to the timetable for town meeting that I want to figure out whether we're gonna move forward on this or not, or reach a consensus. If we don't reach a consensus, obviously, whether it's the ZBA, or the Plank Board, or the Board of Selectmen, um, they could bring an article to town meeting themselves, that might or might not be supported by the other groups, but at least, um, bring something to town meeting, and see what the townspeople want to do.
Okay, Charlie, if the zoning board approved the outdoor entertainment permit, would we still issue the...
Yes.
We would still?
You still issue a live entertainment, cause that, there's, there's a commercial activity license, in essence, that's specifically in-state statute, that has nothing to do with zoning.
Okay, but what if this board didn't want it, and the zoning gave them the approval?
Well, you'd have to provide very concrete reasons why you did it. So for instance, if you felt that the ZBA did not, um, provide enough stipulations regarding public safety and public health, and you felt that, that those specific instances were endangered, and there was no way to correct that, then you would have every right to say no to that event. But, um, you would have, you know, it isn't because the ZBA had said yes, that this is a situation, simply on live entertainment, you have to be very cautious about saying no to things.
Sure.
In, in general, so that you have to have sufficient reasons, sufficient grounds to say no. If the board felt that way, it could say no, but you're gonna have the basis, "We don't like you," or, you know, you know, if you said, so, in the sense of, it has to be legitimate.
No, no, obviously, it wouldn't...
Well, except that, you know, different places, we've seen different things happen.
So, in the case of that, if it's, if a board, not this, whoever sits on this board is gonna be making these decisions. So, if this particular board felt that they had a valid reason not to, and they did not issue that permit, what kind of, um, means would the person that wanted the permit?
They would go to court, they wouldn't go to the ZBA, the ZBA has already approved a special permit in that case. But if you decline to provide a live entertainment permit, and the applicant felt that you didn't have grounds for doing so, they could bring the town, and the board's not gonna court.
Okay, perfect, I just wanted to see what...
And in the reverse situation?
Yes.
Where, what would be the applicant's court recourse to repeal, would that be the same as if they were turned down on any other issue by the zoning board?
Yes.
Or did the planning board?
No, so, yeah, so for this, for instance, if you turn down a special permit, they could go to court on that. Now, it, what's interesting in this situation is, cause you're dealing with zoning, not the commercial entertainment, you're actually have a stronger case for defending a no to a special permit than the board has for saying no to a live entertainment.
Right, I would think so.
But yes, the person could go to land court, in this case, for the board, it wouldn't be land court.
Would it just land court jelly, or would they?
The general rule is...
They could go to the planning board, on a, on a negative vote for the zoning?
No, no, the planning board isn't, isn't the appeals body to the ZBA saying no to the special permit, land court is.
It wouldn't necessarily be land court, it could be Superior Court, or land court.
Right, because a person couldn't get, you couldn't get an entertainment permit if they didn't have the permit to actually hold this...
On the property.
The special permit.
Right, so it kinda goes hand in hand.
Right, I mean, I'll give you an example, um, we deal with common vitriol here, with the Board of Selectmen, but you deal with food permits for the Board of Health. If you're gonna have seating, you need both.
Yeah, okay.
So we're dealing with a zoning issue also, correct?
Right, because that, we need to, what I'm suggesting is a bylaw change that would specifically for live entertainment, we would change the use, the table showing the list of uses, and make that SP, special permit, in the agricultural residential district. But again, with, whether it's these stipulations, or similar stipulations, that are embedded into the bylaw, for instance, the number of days per year at a live entertainment event could occur on a particular piece of property, as an example, or when saying no alcohol, for instance, is the event.
Has there been anything worked into, uh, the business spots in the law?
No, because we're talking about the entire agricultural residential area in town, that's, what, eighty percent, ninety percent of the town, outside of the conservancy?
What are we using for business use for?
Well, because we're specifically saying so, so it's...
So it's a business use in an agricultural zone?
Yes. And...
By special perm.
Right.
For a specified period of time?
Yeah, and I need a first...
And spec, I'm sorry, specialized, special conditions, I get the, the acreage has to be a certain amount, right?
Right.
Time.
Yeah.
Right.
But, you know, I'll give you an example, we have, we do allow residential uses in the commercial district. So, simply because there's a simple label, doesn't, I mean, this is why we have a list of uses, that whole list of table, and there's, what, a hundred and fifty, let's say, differing uses we have in the table. So, simply putting a label saying agricultural, residential, or commercial, or conservancy, doesn't tell you the full story. You've gotta go into the table and say, here are all the uses that are allowed, here are the uses allowed by special permit, here are the uses that aren't allowed.
Can I play devil's advocate? So we've got a business venture that goes out onto somebody's property to have, have this venue. Let's prevent this same entity that has another venue on other properties in town that continue, and even if they open up another, another corporation, LLC, they could basically run a game of different properties throughout the town throughout the year.
Yes, absolutely, you, if you had, let's say, twenty properties in town that met the qualifications, they could, it wouldn't have to be different entities, it could be the same entity, could go to the ZBA in each case to get a special permit for each of the twenty properties, absolutely.
Unless there were reasons to decline it based on the reaction from the population, and also how they ran their, their particular event, for them to admit all the rules and the regs that were set up, and put them through.
You, you could probably go a step further and limit the amount of times any single promoter could do it, but, but it would be so easy to form another LLC that.
I mean, we're more worried about the properties themselves and who's doing it.
I'm just bringing this up because obviously I'm the one that's gonna have to deal with the phone calls and the forces, but to me, it seems very clear, you probably might have to serve this out.
I, I like the tone this is, the proposal is taking with acreage, and it's got some stipulations in there that makes some sense, so I, we should talk about them all, but I.
Part of the handout is both, I included an original proposal, I think I also included a note from the ZBA back in the fall about the reactions, I thought I did. Oh, no, okay. It's a separate piece of paper, so. This is from the ZBA back in the fall, and it gives us some feedback. You know, the ZBA had reviewed this, offers some suggestions on this. I thought I gave you, yeah, that's it right there, that's the ZBA letter, yeah.
I like the number one.
I'm sorry, what was it?
I like the having the five acres.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable when you're talking about the types of events that we're discussing as opposed to on somebody's one acre lot.
Especially if it's music or the type of noise that they would allow that.
Mr. Gair?
And, and I think also, Mr. Bozette, we're, we're single ownership, so along the same lines where a neighborhood will get together and everybody toss in an acre, so to speak, and.
Right, right, right.
And try to meet a five acre requirement, but I think that was.
Everybody use the mutual backyards.
Yeah, yeah.
Good thinking.
It's almost impossible to cover every single possibility.
You're all gonna run into something.
Yeah, but at some point, it becomes a work in progress as you run into a problem.
And I think I wanna talk to land use council about this, but I think what I want to do, and if land use council says this is okay, if we go down this road, is to say that each event will be a different special permit in the sense of, simply because you've had the event there the previous year, events change over time, and then you can, would have to go back in again for a different special permit, because obviously this isn't a continuous use of the property, we're talking to more than a couple of days per year per property. So, it's not as if they're going to have permanent structures and such, they're set aside for these events. That way, especially if we do run into problems with a particular event at a particular locale, and we say, "You know what, the stipulations didn't work, whether it's these ones or additional ones that are particular to that event, we'll have a chance for further review the following year." And so, if ACME Entertainment wants to come in the following year for that site, you can say, "Well, this didn't work, we're gonna, you can come in for another special permit, but you should know, we're gonna probably be putting in some more restrictions in here or require, you know, more degree of public safety or public health issues, or parking, or noise reduction, or whatever else the problems we ran into."
And as Mr. Millie said, too, where each, each permit is a work in progress, each, each permit to like the same scenario that was given before, where it would run like in, in succession with, with the next permit, with the next permit, each, each permit itself would be judged on its own merit and on its own application, so you, you could, like you said, it's a work in progress, pick and choose and add and subtract from whatever you, you need to do, I should think that would be good.
Well, keeping in mind, this is all predicated on it passing a town meeting, too, so that that has to also.
And would the requirement be that they would need to also go to the planning board for site plan, for off-street parking, and any other issues?
Well, if someone isn't, I'm, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be funny, but I'm asking you, is site plan review required if they're not building any structures, or is entirely based on the use?
I believe, I believe our bylaw says that it's also for, I have to look at it exactly, but I believe it's required.
And they would be.
Outside entertainment amusement.
Then they would need the special, they would need the site plan review, which normally has to be granted, you can't be unreasonable in terms of the stipulations for that.
I have a question, because I think it's just the way it's written, number six, the way that it says the board agrees that the festival operator shall provide public safety personnel, I don't know if that's an issue for our union, like, I think the way that it's written, it means that they're not providing the public safety personnel, but it'll be required, right?
Right.
Okay.
I think it was the intent of the meeting.
Be required.
With the police chief and the fire chief.
So, my only suggestion is that we change that to say that it's required, that, that we have it, instead of that the operator provides it, because you don't want somebody bringing in all private.
Something just came to my mind when we started talking about site plan review. Do we actually have a policy in place that suggests where somebody should go first? Over the years, it's been kinda controversial in terms of, we're gonna go to the zoning board of appeals to get our special permit first, and then go get our site plan approved, or should we go get our site plan and find out what it is we need before we go to the zoning board of appeals? Has, has the planning board and the ZBA talked about those things?
Yeah, I mean, John Soroka, I, we, we've seen in previous instances where people come in front of us in the zone, in the planning board, saying, you know, "What, what do you think, you know, we have our meeting with the zoning board in the next week or two, is this, is this, do you see there's gonna be any problems?" So, we, we might do just a glance over, you know, what they're gonna be proposing in front of the zoning board, and maybe give them a few ideas of either changes that we say, "Well, this is not gonna fit our bylaws, so you might wanna do this before that meeting," or we just give our honest opinion, and maybe we just, sometimes the opinion is not what they wanna hear, and usually it falls with what the zoning board says, but we do offer our, our suggestions to people with site plan to use, what they do.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sure you do, I'm, I'm just wondering if we've got a, where to put the, is it the chicken or the egg that, that we should do first, that's all. It would seem to me that probably bouncing it off the planning board would be the appropriate thing to do first, and then walk into zoning, saying, "Hey, these are the recommendations from the planning board." Obviously, the zoning board's gonna do whatever they wanna do inside their own purview, but at least to have gotten some feedback prior, rather than get some variances, go back to planning board and have the planning board say, "Yeah, this doesn't work," or something in that order, it's just a thought to try to streamline things.
There's also, I know it's logistically difficult, I guess, there's nothing preventing the two boards from meeting.
Jointly.
Jointly and reviewing the applications at the same time. I think in fact, one of the things that we got from Barry Bluestone, if it was Bluestone, yeah, was our time for review seems to be longer than many other communities, and one of the ways to reduce that is to have joint meetings if there's an application that has to be reviewed by multiple boards at the same time.
Well, that might be something the zoning board and the planning board could talk about.
We have to get a bigger room.
Yeah, it's too small up there.
And then we'd have to know what the project is first. I mean, if someone shows up and they just wanna get an opinion, I mean, we need to know what the project is, because if it's not gonna, if it's too big, and there's gonna be zoning problems, you know, and the planning board's not gonna approve it, it's, we need to know what the project is first. The person who's coming's gotta come in with an idea and say, "Is this big enough, or is this too big?" Before we go to the zoning board, or, because we can both meet at the same time, but it's just gonna be a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm just suggesting that maybe the planning board and the zoning board could work out some kind of a, a format, who should talk to who first, maybe, or if, if that makes sense.
I would think that in a situation like this, they would go to the planning board first, so that they can meet any necessary ingress, egress.
That was my thought.
Parking issues, I agree with you, and then if it meets these stipulations for public safety at that end, then they can grant a special permit based on that determination.
No. Or at least have the criteria from, from the planning board.
Does the planning board make that determination about like public safety and all that stuff?
Well, again, that would be the site plan review, is this site indicative to the amount of people or cars you would be talking to?
Oh, okay, so they're in charge of sort of calculating that out?
Or at least looking at it.
Yeah, but that should also be incorporated into the special permit, I mean, that, that, yeah, right.
So, let me ask this question, do, do you require a submission of a plan before you meet with the people, so you can review it before you show up? Or is it just they should come show up before you and they have the plans in their hands?
The zoning board or the, or the planning board?
Planning board, either one.
The zoning board, we, we require that there is a plan to be submitted with each application.
Prior to the person showing up?
Yes.
Yes.
Because it has to be submitted a couple of weeks in advance before the actual meeting date, so, and it's part of the application, so it's there on the ZBA's desk.
Which is spelled right out in the application.
Well, I understand, but what if the person just wants a little information about what they should be doing to go through the same process?
And we have done that plenty of times, had scheduled people for quote unquote "informed" discussion, usually followed by, you know, with a, a letter in their hand from the building inspector or something, like, "This is what, what can I do, where should I go, what, what direction should I, he's pointing me in."
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And that, that's happened plenty of times, which then bumps back to the planning board, but like Charlie was saying, there's been applications, whether they be incomplete or, or whatever, that when we meet once a month, then there's another month, you know, you know, it's that, that type of thing. It is a, as Charlie was saying, a long, a long process.
Have we ever thought about adding, and I know I hate to do this, but add an extra date in the month, like doing, so that residents don't have to wait so long, or, I know that sometimes you've done. Like every other?
We would have to double our fee.
Oh.
We'd probably handle it.
No, no, I really do hate to even think.
That's budgetable.
No, no, if the stuff didn't come up, I wouldn't have said anything, but just, it's like, what Charlie was saying, I'm sorry, I've been running up. No, but like if they're saying, like, some residents have to wait longer, and then they have to go, if they have to wait another month before they go to planning, because you guys meet once a month?
Right.
Okay. Well, you're gonna need three times that. No, I'm just saying, because that could make it even, like, I know in some instances you've, you've held a special meeting, but are there busier times that maybe that might work, that you guys would consider that?
I don't think we've talked about that problem, but someone coming in front of the planning board even, they, it's kinda, you, you have to follow what we, what the volunteers are doing in the committees, so a lot of the times, people would come in front of us, and even if we say, "Make a small change to even green space on a site plan review," they're like, "Come back in the next two weeks," or, you know, whatever, and they're just like, "Whatever, whatever I gotta do." I mean, it's, it's who you work with, you can kinda gauge, you know, probably gonna treat our town, especially if they're doing a outdoor entertainment event, too, that they're gonna be coming in front of us, they have to follow by what we've set forth as far as the ZBA's schedule, as far as the planning board's schedule, as far as every other committee and board within the town.
They should start early enough to have it covered.
Exactly.
We try to be a little bit accommodating also, as, as we came on the zoning board, it's normally the practice of the board that on an application, then we go to a site inspection. Now, that's another month if we do a site inspection here, but if the board has on numerous occasions voted to wave beyond site inspection if, if the members are familiar with the property and it cuts 30 years on someone's building's schedule or contractors or whatnot, and big projects that we have in the past with, with the board of zoning board, so we, we have met more than once a month when, when necessary, and things, events get complicated, we try to be as accommodating as we can.
So, do you think, you've seen, you've seen what you're rep, in here, do you think that these changes would be a positive effect on what you guys are doing, to means or?
These here?
Yeah.
Over this specific, yes, I do. I think they're actually almost necessary, to be better than ours, you know, just past practice and the, the things we've run into in the past, I really do think it needs to be cleared up on, especially to try to enforce something, you know, that's really not, it's gotta be, gotta be a chore and a half, and I can honestly say as the board, too, it's been a pleasure working with.
He's got broad, he's got broad shoulders, don't worry about it, he's got broad shoulders.
He was, he was just saying something really nice about wrong. No, no, and I know you're super accommodating when it's a special, like, something you need to be, but it was the Barry Bluestone that sort of got me thinking.
He also said to move the town closer to Route 3, so I don't know about that.
Yeah.
What I'm planning on doing then is I'm gonna work with the board during the next couple of weeks, present to them a possible draft, specific incorporating the comments from the ZBA and such, to put something together, bring the town meeting, they'll have to, you know, I'll make sure that everybody sees it, but as I mentioned, the clocks are gonna run, and I'm gonna need to talk to the board and get something then to the planning board if the board approves it.
And who presents it? Would it be the zoning board that presents the article?
No, it would, no, the board would.
Okay.
I mean, certainly, you know.
I get to designate, right? Or delegate.
There are a number of, sorry, go ahead.
No, no.
Affordable housing, we had, Tom was part of it, was the Housing Production Committee, they had a report come out several years ago now.
Goes back quick.
Yeah, and we've not incorporated any of the recommendations in terms of changes to the zoning bylaw. What I'd like to do, I'm not saying that all the math's been done, but I think we, you know, and thankfully, we've, I think, probably because the housing market has been so hot, no one around here has been specifically interested in building 40B units, because given the actual costs of building them versus the incremental costs of building higher-end housing, they've continually chosen the higher profit margins to go with our standard housing. However, it wouldn't surprise me if sometime in the future, we'll have a situation that folks are gonna wanna do more 40B because.
It allows for density.
Yeah.
You can get more units on a smaller parcel.
But. We, as part of the housing production plan, if we start producing our own units, I don't mean the town itself, but by our zoning and encouraging property owners through various methods to increase the house, the affordable housing stock, we're in a much better shape to say no to large 40B developments. And the suggestions in there included things like having incentives for duplex or two-family homes, where one units would be a 40B unit, we can change, or changing an in-law apartment, so that that could be done. Also, there's more in terms of things like the cluster plans, that's a certain unit, so that lots would be closer together, the entire parcel would be the same size, but the actual lots would be closer together with some open space, but in return, a certain percentage of the units would be 40B units. What I'm trying to do is develop some methods that even on a one-by-one basis would encourage 40B development here in Halifax, so that our percentage right now is below one, the percentage where we can say no to everything is 10. This by itself isn't gonna do that, but if we can start building that inventory up, if someone comes in and says, "I wanna build 100 units of 40B," if we've been building a few units every year, we have a much better chance of being able to say no. We've done nothing with the production plan, I don't know, I, I'd like to bring something to town meeting, if the consensus is no, we don't wanna do anything, okay, I'll still talk to the board about it if they wanna do something separately, but I wanna make some add away.
It comes down to what to do, is really the crux of it. We'll, we'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah. Talk to our legislature and have the laws changed, if we get the mobile home park involved, and I, you know, 10% affordable homes, and we can stay there, and we can use them.
Does the zoning board have an opinion, or the planning board, on the affordable? No?
I mean, because one of the things, I mean, one of the other subjects that sort of parlay's into that is our substandard lots and the abandoned housing issue that we've had, where, where eventually, through our own tax foreclosure, we're going to end up owning lots with substandard structures on them. We're not gonna be, no one's gonna be interested in taking them off our hands with what's there. What I would like to do, since that under the abandoned use, where it's been more than two years, we're gonna be stuck with not being able to develop with them at all. The idea is that perhaps, as other communities have done, is to change it so that, whether it's by special permit or some other mechanism, that we allow. or some other mechanism, that we allow redevelopment of those substandard lots, but for forty B housing, so that the areas with blighted homes are improved, we, at the same time, we get them off our books, and they're back to paying taxes on them, and at the same time, the forty Bs up, the neighborhood is looking better. I don't, you know, I don't see a loss for doing that, because if we leave things as is, it's a town that's owning a bunch of dilapidated housing, and substandard lots, they can't do anything with and can't sell.
Charlie, how many lots are you talking? Do you have any kind of a prediction on that?
Well, right now, I think, I know we're looking at, we're doing tax foreclosure on a number of properties, I don't know that all of them are substandard lots. I know when this issue came up a year ago, we were looking at about a half a dozen particularly, that people had problems with, I'd have to get a specific count from the collector's office, but the thing is, that having this in place isn't going to be limited to the lots that exist right now. It's going to be that if, in the future, whether it's two years from now or ten years from now, if we have a lot that goes into foreclosure, but it's a substandard lot, we'll have the ability to sell it to someone who actually can do something with it.
There's one of these, they're looking to provide.
Right.
Affordable housing.
And, even if, if we can sell it for a dollar and get on the rolls.
I agree, because you have to make it attractive for somebody.
Right, yes.
Because they have to take less dollars on the other end, so they have to make some money someplace here.
So... Is there interest, I guess?
I think it has some merit, I think we should explore it.
I think that portion of it does. I think we have a split size.
Yeah. So, okay, on the multifamily housing, we talked about this back in the fall. I know there, and there's good reason for it, some people would like just to blow the whole thing up and start over. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to spend any time on that, but there were two particular issues that have come up during the last few years. One is that the stipulation that each building needs to be on a separate lot, which no one has explained to me why it's there, other than to prevent multifamily housing in the first place. And the second is, there's been a lot of disagreement about the two-hundred by two-hundred perk test grid that's put in there, and how people can play games with that. I think both, as much as I understand people's inclination of not doing anything until we do everything, well, we've had all these years to do everything and nothing's happened, we've gotten no proposals from anybody to, to a complete revamp of the multifamily section of the zoning bylaw. I know that we've run into difficulties specifically on both of those two issues, and what I'd like to do is make, get revisions done on both of those. One, my recommendation is eliminate the, each building having to be on a particular lot unless someone can come up with a reason. I mean, we don't, the two ones that we have, Halifax Meadows and we have Twin Lakes, and they seem to operate quite fine without having to have every single building on a separate lot, obviously, and eliminate that provision. And then the other is on the two-hundred by two-hundred, actually making it a little more rigid in the sense of that the perk tests have to happen two hundred feet apart, so that the grid actually is followed, rather than we have four perk tests right at the corners of four of those two-hundred by two-hundred cells in the grid. Oh, we found four places right next to each other that those perk, where the rest of the lot doesn't, and having it that way eliminates as much, so much of the game playing that a large development might try to get through.
That, that's something that we should work with the board to help. I know that the board helped to mitigate that language a little bit by allowing for soil samples as opposed to physically perking everything, which made sense.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, the incredible number of perk tests that would have taken place. But yeah, that makes some sense, and to your point, we have some conflicting language in there. On the one side, we seem to encourage multifamily housing, and on the other side, we put some restrictions that nobody can understand. And I think you're right, that commentary about on the individual lot is difficult. But in, in with that is we have some specific setbacks that we're gonna have to look at too, because we also included setbacks for each individual building, uh, from...
Each other.
Each other. Yeah, so, so, but to your point, I think we can at least address that with some quote-unquote simplicity, as opposed to trying to attack the entire bylaw in time from May. Unless somebody wants to take it on, I'd be happy to see the planning board take a step at that, but...
We are revamping, we're, we're trying to come up with some conclusions of, of, you know, edits that we'd wanna make. It, it's definitely been something on our radar, and we're trying to get it as, you know, as fast as done as possible, but we are looking at neighboring towns and how they've kind of like looked at their multifamily developments and how we can, you know, incorporate language, so it isn't conflicting.
Yeah, and that's really the only real problem, is depending on who wants to interpret it, you can take it anywhere. And obviously, we're, legal issues involve in some of that language now, so.
Does anybody have an opinion on what Charlie's proposal is about the multi-lots? Or the, anybody have an opinion on that?
It's definitely a problem, you could see where some people would take advantage of the actual language, maybe something added within the two-hundred by two-hundred foot grid, but at least fifty feet apart from the last test. Or seventy-five feet from, a minimum of seventy-five feet from the, from any other perk test in any of the other grids, something as simple as that, but I don't know if that's a temporary solution to a permanent problem too, you know?
Oh, okay.
You know, where you're just fixing up that one point, you know?
Well, there's a ripple effect to everything, so you have to be careful. Any, any thoughts, Alan, where?
You know, the actual bylaw itself, two-hundred foot by two-hundred foot, doesn't make any sense at all. If a lot perks, the lot perks. If it perks strictly on the right-hand side or the left-hand side, that's where you're gonna place your septic system, you're gonna place your structures accordingly. The two-hundred by foot perpulation test is outside of your regular perk test. So, it doesn't make any sense at all.
Well, I think it was there to, in essence, try and gauge how many of those lots, how much of the acreage could be actually developed versus where the septic systems would be, so that we didn't end up with someone building more homes or more units there than the land would have supported otherwise.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what zoning bylaws are for, you know, this is a prohibited type bylaw that, you know, from a perpulation standpoint, whether a lot, a lot perks or perks, this two-hundred foot grid.
What you're saying is there isn't any science for it.
If you're doing commercial drawings where you need drainage calculations, they need that. But in a normal development, you're gonna have your, your standard lot sizes, and that pretty much should be sufficient.
And in some instances, we're talking about plants, not just individual septic systems, right?
But did you include that, Charlie, because it would only be, to your first point, which is one lot?
No, it's, these are two separate topics.
Okay, but I didn't know if that's why.
No, the two-hundred by two-hundred is, was there, I mean, I wasn't there when it was put in, but my reading of it indicates, I know there are things happened before I was here. There are, my, but reading the bylaw, it's, it's an indication that...
It was exclusionary.
Right.
I have some historical perspective on it, but...
Because the idea was that you could, you know, you could play games with the perk tests and say, okay, we can squeeze this number of units in per the perk tests, but now you force the two-hundred grid and you start reducing that number, because more than likely, some of that land, given the nature of Halifax, or what special work, what land is left, some of the land won't perk.
Okay.
And some of it, if it was in wetlands, you couldn't do the two-hundred, two-hundred grid, because you couldn't perk in the wetland area. So, it was, it was, it was backdoor exclusionary is what it was. And that's, I'm not saying it was good or bad, I'm just saying that's what it was.
But you're looking at keeping that.
Well, what I'm, the only, the issue I've seen happen is that developers will come in and try and play games, so that if you think about tic-tac-toe, you can think about the corners of that grid. They'll put four of the perk tests right next to each other in the four corners, they're not actually two hundred feet apart.
What you're saying is the two-hundred by two-hundred grid is a sliding grid. You, you could, you just pick a place that works the best for you and put it. There is no criteria on how you develop this two-hundred by two-hundred grid. So, the whole thing is pretty arbitrary at the beginning.
And it's a bylaw that only Halifax has.
Right.
There's more of a community in Massachusetts that has such a bylaw. This by law strictly prohibited multifamily. You know, I mean, he's right as far as if you perk here, I mean, your soil's sometimes not consistent, so you could have a corner of the lot, this corner would perk, this corner would perk, the elements didn't. So, you could play...
Slide a grid over.
Slide a grid, but this grid is just strictly prohibited multifamily.
So, it...
And it's not definable, which is really my problem here.
But I would suspect that twenty-five, thirty years ago, there was somebody or a group of people that were against multifamily.
Well, that's why you also see...
I don't think that this was in twenty, this was something in the last twenty years, huh?
It was in the early nineties, something.
No.
Maybe the nineties.
Yeah.
Nineties, okay, time flies, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember being on the bylaws clinic, they called by law at all. It came sometime after, which, but this is strictly prohibited, the growth that people at the time didn't want. They didn't care about the affordable housing, they didn't care about the ten percent that the town needs and requires and...
Right.
Right, the population was probably thirty-eight hundred people in the town, or four thousand people, and they didn't want, like you said, the multifamily, the big apartment complexes, the, all that.
I think it's easier handled, but I, I like the language of one acre per dwelling unit. That's in there anyway, with multifamily, and you could limit it to a certain amount of uplands. I mean, typically on a lot, we require forty thousand square feet of contiguous upland. You could, if you're gonna have any restrictions, that makes more sense, and I'm not saying to restrict it, I'm just saying that's more sensible than trying to do this grid thing, which is, has been a bear over the years, because I've had to deal with it too, and just, you know, everybody's got a different interpretation of how that thing was gonna work and where it was gonna be planted and...
I, I think it also depends on the future of where we go with other parts of the bylaw. If we stop looking at cluster homes as such, it's gonna be difficult to have, you know, one acre per, the forty thousand contiguous for the perk and for, so I think it's gonna determine how we would go with multifamily housing or something.
Well, we, we tried to do a clustered zoning bylaw probably fifteen years ago now, and we just couldn't get it together. There wasn't enough support for it, couldn't put it together, the committee was fractured. Maybe we need to look at some of that stuff in that affordable housing thing. Cluster housing is pretty much what we're talking about.
I could be wrong, it seems to me though, that the zoning board would have some subtleties, is if we were to allow something like that, then, like you said, a requirement for a special permit could be so many units of four, well.
Yeah, you can, you can incorporate that, that would go a long way towards at least us making an attempt at it to satisfy the common law, because they will jam one down our throat eventually. And I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad thing, I'm just saying that, you know, we lose control, that's all.
So, what do we wanna do for this year? What do you think is achievable?
Well, on the two-hundred by two-hundred, I think I need to talk to the board more about what the board wants to do. Either eliminate it entirely, for instance, is a possibility, or do nothing. I, I think I need to think, I wanna talk with the board more.
What does zoning think about that? Do you guys have an opinion?
And we've been really disgusted, other than the problems and what we've run into in the past, you know, with the two-hundred, two-hundred foot grid interpretation, you know, and like you said, it was the interpretation, but other than that, we don't, I could see clearing up the language on it. I think that's your two choices, either getting a heck of a lot more specific about it, as in spaced distances between them, or eliminate it altogether. I, that's the first time I've heard that we're the only town in Massachusetts that has a two-hundred by two-hundred foot grid, or some similar fact, similarly, to be stretching like that, but...
The comment from developers in the past was always, "What?" I'm not saying...
It's the same as, as the comment on each individual lot.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Yeah, how do we resolve that?
Yeah, right.
Can we resolve that?
We know all the time, yeah.
Yeah, but that's something we should, we should get with.
Can we resolve that now? The one lot thing?
Well, yeah, well, I would like, I'm going to propose to the board that the requirement of one building per lot be eliminated for multifamily.
How do you guys feel about that?
Before, yeah.
Before that?
You could still leave the separation in there.
Okay.
Between buildings, but...
Planning?
I guess the only thing is, it can be confusing as far as like where the houses are. If you consider one lot, you consider one lot, one house, essentially, when we're looking at a site plan review. If you just start square on a, on, on your acreage and say, "That's a lot", but there could be five house, five, five, you know, houses or two multi, you know, two-family houses duplex, five of those within that one lot, then that could be very confusing for us as far as like...
For everybody.
Or, well, there's a common space now, do you share enough area for your septic? There's things like that to come into play when we're dealing with what's going in that square or rectangle, or how we wanna divide it out. It's hard for us to give our honest opinion and our honest feedback when doing a site plan review.
Something needs to be changed, suppose that.
And it is true, I mean, we are the only town with a multifamily, a multifamily bylaw, but a lot of other towns include that as a subdivision versus multifamily.
We are, really?
They just, they, they create, there's no, there's no specific like...
Boy, we really didn't want it.
Article as a multifamily development within the town.
Somebody really didn't want it twenty-five years ago, for sure.
Your generation.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, even, even the Meadows and Twin Lakes were both accomplished by Corrigan.
Corrigan.
Okay.
So, you know, so there was controversy here all along, the history is, is there.
I think a lot of confusion comes in with the whole just the language itself. There's this confusion with the zoning and with the building code as far as, the building code doesn't specify multifamily housing, it's not in there.
Right.
It's, it's housing uses. And again, ours specify multifamily, multifamily housing and multifamily development. The condo development is, has multifamily housing without one, within one lot, but there's single-family residences within towns, so it's, the whole thing is confusing.
Yeah.
It's they're not, they're not apartments per se, like an R2 would be in the building code, or an R3 would read for single-family development, uh, single-family housing.
So, I guess we've established the, obviously, some, the reason why we have these bylaws is because a group of people or an individual did not want it. And so, we've established the why, so that, so then we can look at it, well, now we know why we're sort of messed up right now.
And sometimes, bad language just falls through. And, you know, the, the thing with the lot may not have even been intentional, it was just, oh, everything's got a lot, you know, the mentality, everything belongs on a lot. It could be anything, but we need to clean that up.
All right.
And clean it up in the best manner to make it as understandable.
I'm gonna continue working on it then, and see whether we can get something that...
So, even if we just fix those two, and then next year, we look at other parts of that particular bylaw?
Well, you've already said that the planning board's already, has been continuing to work on it, so...
Okay.
Um, working to a couple more recent issues, and these are ones that I've talked to Rob or vice versa about several things. One is the building permit bylaw, this would not be a zoning bylaw per se, it'd be in the regular bylaw, but it basically would say that a building permit's required for any use or for any structure that required one under the state regulations. It's not changing when someone needs a building permit, in the sense of we're not changing, I'm making this up, but over here, the state says you need a building permit for that, but we say not, or vice versa. It's simply, in essence, taking the quota mass regulations, citing it into our regular bylaws and saying, "You need a building permit if you need one under quota mass regulations." What this does is allow, Rob, if someone goes out and does something without the building permit, he can go through the non-criminal disposition. It's much easier getting a fine levied or enforcement order under that, rather than going up to the state and going whatever convoluted process of the state board you'd have to go through.
Yeah, and in, in particular, only because I've had a little experience, in particular, if you're taking a homeowner, you're not gonna take a homeowner to the Board of Building Regulations and Standards, it's just, just doesn't work out. A contractor, now you've got some, some strength in your action, because you can in fact put some limitations on their construction supervisor's license, so you've got some, some way to, to deal with it. But this is not unique to Halifax, I can specifically tell you, other towns have suddenly realized that that language is not directly in their bylaws, which allows them no opportunity to enforce it other than trying to do something at the state level, I'm sorry to me- I'm sorry to meet, jump in front of you.
It puts it in the zoning where we can.
Well, it would be not be zoning, it would just, yeah, be regular bylaw, yeah. But obviously, I wanted input from everybody else, um, even though it won't be a zoning bylaw, it's obviously an interest in something like this.
You guys?
So zoning, I mean, why don't we just do that, that we're all in consensus tonight that it should be done, unless it's, just leave it at that, let's just change it, you know, rather than draw it out anymore than we have to, if it's, certainly, it's gotta, would make his job a heck of a lot more easier than, than, uh, trying to determine, okay, if you're just doing, uh, replacement windows, you don't need a permit, but under the state you do need one, as opposed, you know, repairing a roof or fixing, changing the shingles and, it would, it would have to make things a little bit more uniform.
Tie it to the state building code.
And, again, as we, I think as we mentioned before too, way back twenty years ago, when the population was, was nothing, we, we didn't run into those problems. Now that it's getting up there in the building and there's more construction, it should be more uniform. And, and easy for the contractors to come in and go, I didn't know that, I didn't know that, and then forced to go to the zoning board, and, and then it's always been right on the application, it's not a matter of doing something, I hope you don't get caught, it's a matter of you have to comply with, now you know that you have to comply, it says it right on the, on the building applications, so just make things so much easier.
I'll, I'll put something together for the board and send along everybody's word. Um, Rob, the signature block question?
It's confusing, uh, I think it was. It pertained, it came up because of condominiums, basically, and the question was, there's two sides of the question. One was if something's approved by, say, the planning board, the zoning board, um, as a multifamily development, should, should there be a signed plan that can, site plan that can be recorded at the registry deeds? Problem is, I've read, um, one eighty through A, and I don't think it's a requirement that the site plan has to be recorded. There's stipulation in there as a floor plan should be, be recorded. I think it's probably a good idea, because if you're gonna have a condominium association, they should be able to at least go to the registry deeds and see what the site plan is, where the common areas are and how it's laid out, rather than trying to dig it up in the town hall and find out where it is and, and go from there.
But the condo, condo docs may have, in a condominium per se, may have said information in it, because they have to record the condo documents.
The document specifically, but under one eighty three A, it says floor, a floor plan, because it says.
This floor plan?
Says floor. So there's confusion in there as to, you know, is, is a site plan, I mean, maybe we can ask council, but the way I'm reading it under one eighty three A, I don't think it's a requirement to have.
You may be right.
It, it, I'm not saying it never has been done, it certainly has, and I think it's a good idea, but I don't, I don't know if it's required.
Is this, is this just for condos, or is this for other?
I, I think it would be anything.
Any site plan.
Something out of the ordinary, multifamily development, something along those lines.
But, but I mean, is this, do we need the signature blocks for a subdivision? Do we need a signature block for a commercial development?
Subdivision would, would get recorded.
Okay.
But technically, you know, I don't know what went on in that area, that it's privately owned property on the, on the search issue, so there's not, not necessarily recording a, a site plan because, really, it's private property, you don't record single family, I don't know.
Right. You can, but we don't, but people who are building a house, don't bring a site, don't record a site plan for a house.
So basically what it is, is if it's like a single family home, we report a format, which would be the same, is you capping that off, you can require it to be recorded formally.
All right, I finally got it, because most of this conversation was just over my head.
So anything of substantial change, other than different levels recorded, you basically, you would have to do that or find out or inspect it in order for something to cause something that didn't comply with what was actually recorded.
Well, again, what are we talking about?
Site plan or, or even a floor plan for that matter.
Well, again, if it's, if it's by special permit, whatever was submitted at the time was a special permit, it should be, and that's, that's where the question is, well, should we have something that shows that these were the plans that were accepted at that time for the special permit? Now, you can argue, well, this is what was submitted, it should be implied, but do you wanna go a step further and have a signature block where you sign off and say, these were the plans that were presented to us?
And that happens a lot, I'm sure, in that, in Georgia.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Maybe I'll talk to land use council and figure out what we could do in terms of a bylaw and what that, what bylaw would cover for signature block. Sorry?
No, go.
Um, something, other things that Rob and I have talked to when I've been in conversation with land use council, there are a couple areas that Rob's been having to deal with. One is on the time limited permits, particularly the in-law apartments. Um, right now in the bylaw, in-law apartment, special permits are for five years, at which point the person needs to come back in and renew it. The problem is that, in talking both to, uh, George Williams and a couple men, hey, they both agree that if we, our current time limited permits with the in-laws, in particular, they require a new permit. It's not, because what we've done is we've told the abutters that this permit will expire on a certain date. They're never notified after that that the permit's been renewed or anything else has changed with that. And therefore, we can't continue doing it that way, where someone, Smith or Jones, simply comes in, talks to ZBA, and gets the permit renewed. We'd have to hold another set of hearings, notice to the abutters, the advertiser, and everything like that, which is, I mean, we need to go through that the first time certainly, but there's not, as far as I can see, a reason to go through it more than once. If we can put in instead of a time limited permit, that the stipulations include an inspection period, so whether it's every year, every five years, whatever, um, the stipulations are, so that the special permits for the in-laws, I'm picking on them because they're specifically in the bylaw, is time limited, then can go through the inspection process. If Rob would find that they are not complying with the stipulations in the permit, he can give them a certain number of days to in fact rectify the situation, and if then they don't, then we'll enforce the zoning bylaw. Now, one of the things I wanna check with land use council is if we reach the point of, because Rob could simply say, fine, I'm fine, you a certain number of dollars a day, well, that doesn't necessarily do anybody any good, whether we instead have the, possibly revoking the time limit, the permit instead, so we don't go through, I mean, it might, and, and land use council might say, no, you've gotta go to court to do something like that, at least we'd have some basis other than fineing, because sometimes fines don't work, and then we've got enforcement orders and everything like that. Um, but with the current system in place, people need to come in then every five years and go through that process. That means obviously more work for you all, the ZBA, but it also just is wearing terror on the homeowner who has already gone through it once, and they're seeing, okay, why am I doing this again? Well, we wanted to check to see if everything was okay. Well, why couldn't you just come over and check to see if everything was okay, without going through the special permit process again?
Because of the stipulation, they would have to re-.
Right, and what.
Or re- re- notify.
Right, and council is saying that the process we've got now, it's gonna require, require it anew, everything has to go through it again. Saying, um, I don't know how many other special permits and such are time limited, they're not specified that way in the zoning bylaw, but I don't know in terms of what's approved, whether any other ones are time limited. If they are, we're back in the same boat. Um, not us, but one of the cases that council had pointed out was another community, um, somebody built a non-commercial radio tower, I guess they were a ham radio operator, but it was fairly tall, um, and they needed a special permit for it. Well, the town wanted to go and inspect it every certain number of years to make sure that, um, the tower was being maintained, that it wasn't gonna fall down. And, um, that's allowed, but it can't be a new permit each time. Um, it can, same, so, with the same reasoning, in a sense of we wanna make sure the stipulations are being obeyed, for the radio tower in this community, it was the same situation, that the town could go and check to see in fact whether they, um, the stipulations were being obeyed, and if they weren't, then do something about that.
And it was, it was based on, on a timeframe, like you said, that public safety is involved, this tower could become loose, it could become rusty, it could fall down, there's some definite public safety that is gonna be viewed.
So I, I wanna work with the ZBA on making a change to, at least for the in-laws, how you handle the other time limited permits, I, you know, I think maybe you have to work through that on a case by case basis, but for the in-law apartments, to make that change, so that we don't have the, um, permit holders don't have to go through that process, at least, certainly maybe meet with the board, certainly maybe, not maybe, but certainly go through the inspection process, okay, we've got a checklist, is that common area still there type of situations, the in-law person still there, et cetera, boom, 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 okay, fine, you're good, thanks for coming by, everything's good, see you another year, five years, whatever it is. Um, but not force you all and not force the applicants to go through the entire process again that they did five years ago.
Well, therein, look, it also is, the concern was, and the reason for an in-law apartment was to eliminate the illegal rental property, and that, and that's, that was, I think, the basis of it twenty somewhat, somewhat years ago. What you had said too, it, to rectify that, now, when you go back, if you don't, if you don't have a permit that expires and has to be renewed, whether, whatever the process may be, now, now how do you remedy, like you had said, how do you remedy that? We have a case in front of us right now, which is the exact same thing. It's always been the practice of the board over the years, that the in-law kitchen be removed, and that pretty much, uh, takes away the opportunity of having a rental property. So, uh, and then, uh, and then all you basically have is an addition onto the house with bedrooms and, uh, shared living space, or even closed off or whatever, but that, that maybe they're not, now that we're talking about, yeah. If there isn't an, an in-law, there is no family, for the, for the person, anything.
I think, I think the tremendous problem with it is, to your point, it's, it's the use, if somebody's there and they're a tenant and they're renting, they've got an illegal use. Somebody can be there and be in, say, the same situation, like an in-law apartment. Do you, you know, we have a bylaw that says we have to have shared living space, so that's in there specific, you have to have it shared. But as far as, what's the difference from somebody closing a door to their, their unit as if it was a bedroom or a separate area?
Or creating a boarding house with one kitchen and a bunch of.
Boarding house has different specific regulations that they would have to meet, that we, we can enforce, and we have more power on that. Lining houses do the same thing. But it's, it's difficult to, again, with the bylaw we have, and again, I, I think we would need a boilerplate, this is, this is what you need to do in order to get this, and it would have to be the same for everybody across the board. And, and that's the daunting task, how, how do you enforce something that you don't know what's going on there until it's a problem? I, I think Charlie's point, it becomes inspections, it becomes affidavits, signed affidavits from them, uh, it involves getting the neighbors involved, because they're the ones that are gonna see stuff all, this, this is the meeting, these are the affidavits that are being signed for this, um, so it's enforcement part, it's hard, because like you said, I mean, somebody gets an in-law apartment, twenty minutes later, the door's up and they, and they've got a rental unit.
Especially if now that special permit is gonna run with the property and not with the applicant.
Oh, right.
Is that, now, now that's, now you've created a, a people property with a rental income, or you're creating a two-family home.
Right, exactly.
It gets even dicier than that, because if you look in forty A, it also has a section in there that says that you cannot regulate the interior of somebody's house.
Oh, really?
You cannot regulate any interior portions of a single family residence.
Well, see, I guess Mike, and I'm the dummy up here on this one, because.
I, I don't know specifically, some of the impigrid portions of it.
Somebody looks at the word apartment, the definition of apartment says of something that's standing alone, it's an apartment, somebody else standing there changes, why can't they have a kitchen or anything else? In most apartments, as you go in buildings, do have it, that material in there.
And, and again, it's because, you know, the building code kicks in at some point too, if we've got separate units, we have to have fire separation, we have to have different codes for that. I, I, you know, again, I think it's easier to allow duplexes, and if an in-law wants to live in one half of a duplex, at least now you can build something that's got a fire separation wall, it's allowable, and it's not multifamily housing, um, but, you know, it's, it doesn't give you that warm fuzzy feel, you know, feeling of a single family dwelling, dwelling or shared space.
And also, it's, you know, new construction with the duplex would be so much easier, as opposed to trying to add something on to create a duplex out of a single family.
Because now we're.
And then you have separate utilities.
Separation, you know, so.
Well, we already allowed duplexes by special permit.
Correct.
Okay, so what's the difference between a duplex and a multifamily?
Shared living space.
Well, no, in-law apartment.
Well, that's right.
No, 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 I'm just talking in general, like when we talk about multifamily as opposed to duplex.
Is more.
More units.
Three, three or more.
Oh, three or more, okay, and then my other.
But not by, by, by our definition, I'm sorry, Charlie.
Not by our definition.
Do we have duplexes as a separate use?
Well, our multifamily definition is wrong.
Okay.
Do we need?
Well, that's not surprising.
I'll talk to you.
But, but, oh, it is, so maybe we could fix that too, but my question for you is how do other towns handle the in-law issue?
Other towns?
Yeah.
Well, some towns are as of right.
Which is?
Clinton is.
You don't need a special permit.
Right, it's mine, I'm doing what I want with it.
My mother's moving in, tell me I got an extra bedroom, I'm gonna let her live there.
Well, there are some conditions.
Is that considered an in-law apartment?
Has to be enclosed, you know, the same building, it can't be separate on the property.
Shared utilities, not separate utilities.
Okay, I'm just curious, maybe we could look at.
An in-law apartment, really, you have your own kitchen, your, everything is in there.
Yes.
If you just have a room and your, your mother wants to live, but she's using your kitchen, that's not an in-law apartment.
No.
She's just moving in with you.
She's a board.
Well, now, what if we wanted to use in a separate kitchen?
Well, they give her mic away, man, they're hot, like, you know.
We ran into it in the past with other applicants, where, like you said, we told them, say, to, you need to remove the stall. Basically, what they're, what we're telling them is, we don't want you to have separate cooking, separate sanitation, separate living, because it constitutes basically an apartment. What we're saying is, you basically have an other bedroom and a living room, or another bedroom and, you know, dock, you know, playroom or whatever, um, but that's, that's even more difficult because, you know, how does, how does that land to forty eight?
Is how is that any different, I mean?
Yeah, and charging rent or charging the kids with the board.
Can you do that with your kids? I didn't know I could do that.
But you can charge if getting paid and everything.
It's all together there.
Are we gonna start all these problems tonight?
Well, we're gonna stop, so.
Yeah, but just, um, I'll, I'll talk with Rob more about this, I'll talk with the board more about this, I, at least on the, I, I wanna get something in there, because unless the ZBA wants to say, okay, we're gonna, everybody, you're doing a new permit every five years, and require going through that, maybe that's what we want to do, I mean, maybe that's, but it's, if we're doing time limited, you've gotta do new permits every time the period ends.
The eye giving an affidavit, if you say all those things that we.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, you've gotta, you've gotta, you've gotta hold a hearing, you gotta notify the abutters, it's gotta be noticed in the paper, it's a new permit. Um, and if that's the road we want, fine, but that's what we better follow if we're doing time limited.
On the, on the change. So you come up with other criteria?
Yeah, right, but on the change of name, I, you're gonna have to stop, I mean, I can bring, I can bring land use council and talk to you all about that. But I think we can't, we can no longer tie the permits to the person as we tied to the property.
You grant a special permit, it's gonna come with some stipulations based on bylaw and, so we're basically telling them, you need to meet these stipulations if it comes to our attention further down the road, you know, they will enforce them.
But, and also that the stipulations need to be regular in the sense of you can't pick and choose, if you're giving in-law apartment here, and an in-law apartment there, and an in-law apartment there, everybody's gotta meet the same criteria, you can't say to one particular person, you've gotta do more than these other people, everybody has to be treated the same way.
All right, shall we move on?
Yeah, I, I mean, I covered everything I needed to, I didn't know, I mean, they're here, I didn't know if there were any other topics, the ZBA or the.
You still have the extra buck in the. Well, we could literally rewrite the entire bylaw, but I, I think this has to be done incrementally. Anybody from any of the boards wanna add anything before we move on?
Anybody from any of the boards want to add anything before we move on? We're good? We have a separate conversation going on over there, so we're going to, we're just going to eliminate them now, we're going to go right by them.
Bye.
Thank you so much for coming in.
How do we feel, I love you.
What?
And well, you should.
Bye, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Mr. D?
You've been kicked out of better places.
You could stay.
Or worse places, I don't know.
Don't leave if we got to see you.
Don't worry, Bert, I'll go to your next, Bert, don't worry, I'll go to your next meeting.
Okay, just on the complaint, zoning complaint we had from 343, 48 on Ponson Street where the board, where the board had appointed me temporarily as CEO.
Yes, yes, yes.
I did reply to the complainant, that the complainant has a certain number of days appealed to the ZBA, but basically it came down to that the procedure was followed, I didn't even have to go into the issues of the actual approval, but that the procedure was followed properly, the approvals that were given by the ZBA were very specific to the property and how it was to be used and following those uses, and that the, there was no appeals filed on the timely matter back three, four years ago now since it was approved. I said there was no enforcement to, there's no zoning violations, so no enforcement, so, but it still could go to the ZBA, I'll let you know what happens if anything does. For the oil pumping facility from Mount Ponson Pond, we did get three proposals this time, I still need to go through them, I'll get a report back to the board, it's on from 13th. Interestingly, on the other junk car issue I've been dealing with at 27 Hillside where...
Oh.
Well, I don't, I, I need to check with the chief about this. I was, when I talked to land use, I talked to Larry Mayor about this, I would have to be the one who filed the criminal complaint once the, they ignored the filing notices, but yet I got a piece of paper that says that in fact they're hearing a criminal complaint on March 12th, so I'm going to check with Larry about that. So we'll see how that falls out. We already talked about zoning, school budgets, after the finance committee meeting last night, I just confirmed the times and places for the budget hearings.
Thank you.
Both of them are posted for six. Now, I know...
Yeah, Goren tapped five.
Well, I have the notices...
Oh, no, no, I believe you.
I have the notices specifically from the Silver Lake Regional School District website.
Okay, I've changed my calendar to six.
They say six o'clock for February 5th at Halifax Elementary School and six o'clock for Thursday, February 8th. I'm going to post both for the board of selectmen, not that I'm saying a quorum has to go, but just in case two or more of you are there. One of the things that was reviewed last night, they didn't make any approvals of any budgets last night, but I think there's a realization that the special ed budget's hitting hard this year and it's chewing up a lot of what we have in reserve for increases in new growth in the normal 2.5 percent. It's going to be a, it's not a difficult year in the sense of, you know, suddenly we have to cut everybody's budget back, but it's going to be a difficult year in that I think there's going to be a lot less to say yes to than what we expected. We'll see how everything plays out, but I think the message needs to get out to both the elementary school in Silver Lake that whatever their budgetary requests are, they may not be honored this year, and it may not be honored by a significant amount of money. And then they'll have to, if, for the elementary school, they'll have to make decisions within their budget. If town meeting agrees with the finance committee for Silver Lake, if two or more of the towns say no to the Silver Lake assessments, then they're going to have to go back and come up with a new budget or one that fits within those assessments that are approved by the towns. The large solar array that's proposed for River Street, the proposal did go to the planning board last week for site plan review, but the plans only showed up, I think, a couple hours before the hearing, so, not the hearing, the meeting, so they didn't even bother doing it, it wasn't posted as part of the meeting agenda, for example. I'm going to confirm with the staff whether they're in fact going to do a site plan review for the array at their next meeting, if they are, I'm going to publicize that fact simply because as part of site plan review, notice, abutters aren't notified, and I want to make sure the abutters are aware of what's going on. Again, it's site plan review, it's not a special permit, solar arrays are allowed use by right in all the districts, no matter how large, but I want to make sure that the general public has knowledge that the array's being proposed, and this is probably going to be their opportunity to come in and say, look, this, part of the site plan, we need this, we need that, and at least give them a heads up. Revocation hearing for evergreen beverages, Twin Lakes Liquor is still scheduled for the next meeting on the 13th, we haven't heard a response from the owner, neither myself or Piamaducci over in the treasure collector's office. So my hope is that there'll be a response, but...
Are we, are we sure that he's getting the mail that we sent out to him and stuff?
Yeah, he sent out certified.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if anyone's picking it up, but we're doing what we're supposed to be doing to notify him. We already talked about the two junk car issues, we had that, and Bill Sweeney gave notice to the town clerk's office, he resides as the town's representative for Logan Airport, noise advisory committee. I don't think, there really haven't been issues, I know every once in a while I can...
It flies over, no, it's my house all the time.
Well, I can hear them putting on the, in essence, the equipment of the Jake brakes, you know, 40,000 feet up or wherever it is, but relative to communities nearby, it's not...
Big rumble of my house going in a northward direction every night.
I always wait for you.
As proposed, the proposed leash law, I'll call it, for Burridge Pond, the wildlife refuge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I did post on Facebook about it, there was, you know, people said, oh, thanks for posting, thanks, oh, yeah, but I got no comments saying I'd like the board of selectmen to oppose it, I'd like the board of selectmen to support it, I got nothing like that on Facebook, I got nothing, no emails, no phone calls, no visits, no nothing. I'm going to contact Jason Zimmer, who had originally told me about this because he suggested that someone from the town should go to the hearing in Westboro, I'm going to write to them and say, I'm not planning on going, no one else is planning on going, at least from the board or myself, because no one has indicated any particular interest in this. Now, people might be responding to this directly, which is, oh, that's fine, but I'm not going to go up there to the hearing, I'll send the Facebook feed that I got generated, but that's going to be it. So I don't know if Pam has anything else, I know that I wanted to go into executive session, and it's brief to go over the union negotiations because we've got stuff upcoming, but that's it.
Anything else, Pam?
No?
So I need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations and not to...
We will not be coming.
And this will be with the police chief, fire chief, highway, cemetery, recycling union, patrol office sergeants and firefighters, and that holding the discussion in public would be detrimental to the town.
Second, what he said, and we will not be coming back into regular session at the end of our executive session.
There'll be no announcements.
So there will be no announcements and we will say goodnight.
Goodnight.
All in favor?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
You now?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
All right. Have a good night. Is that your call?